Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September 20 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. We do have one change to the draft minutes. George Chelwick of District One was in fact present and voted on all the issues, so we will remove his name from those listed as absent and we will change the attendance numbers accordingly to 206 present and 23 absent. Are there any other proposed changes to our draft minutes of the September 20 meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Paul Settlemeyer of District Two.
Thank you, Tom. Fellow members of the RTM, I stand before you as Chairman of the Southwestern Regional Planning Agency. The Southwestern Regional Planning Agency, in cooperation with the Town of Greenwich, the City of Stanford, and Connecticut Department of Transportation, is conducting a study of the Route One corridor between Greenwich and Stanford. The goal of the study is to improve safety for all users, manage access, accommodate transit, and enhance corridor economic potential and community character. Many of you participated in the Route One visioning workshops last June. I thank you for your participation. I am now asking you to participate in design workshops where the study team will report on their progress in developing concepts on what they heard in the June workshops. Design workshops require no appointment and will be held this week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center from 9:00 to 5:00. During these hours, please stop by, meet one-on-one with the study team, and share your thoughts and concerns, and review the development ideas. There will be a public meeting to hear the study teams' report on their progress and summarize the concepts developed during the workshop. That meeting will be held on Thursday, October 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Civic Center. A final report should be available in four to six months. I ask residents, business owners, and property owners in Greenwich to participate in this study. I will be passing out flyers to all districts and would appreciate it if district heads would circulate the flyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I want to invite you to participate tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. in the Cone Room of the first meeting on the 2011-12 budget. It is the Capital Improvement Program Committee's first public hearing, and the initial list of projects you can find in your 10-11 budget. We will be providing them tomorrow night, and those are the projects that were identified for funding in the 15-year plan. Now, it is important to note that we are listening to citizenry to see if there are other matters that may need funding in the next year, and there may be items within the proposed schedule that will be pushed out for many reasons. But nonetheless, this is an opportunity to begin the conversation. We have had meetings with various neighborhood groups, seven to be exact, and have solicited their input, and tomorrow night's an opportunity for the broader community. So I would encourage you to attend. It's at 7:00 p.m. in the Cone Room at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon of District Six, to be followed by Robert Burns, our Labor Contracts Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members. Whereas Lee Smith McKeithen, a member of the Representative Town Meeting for 20 years from District Six, died of natural causes on June 21st, 2010, in Albuquerque, New Mexico at the age of 97 years old. Whereas Lee McKeithen lived in Old Greenwich from 1950 to her retirement in 2003. She was born in Albemarle, North Carolina on April 24th, 1913. She graduated as valedictorian of her class at Albemarle High School at the age of 16 and proceeded to receive her bachelor's degree from Duke University in 1932 at the age of 19 when she commenced law school. In 1934, while still a law student, Lee sat for and was admitted to the North Carolina Bar. The next year, 1935, she and a classmate were the first women to graduate from Duke Law School. After graduation, she practiced with the R.L. Smith &amp; Sons Law Firm in Albemarle, representing local individual and business clients and arguing a number of cases before the North Carolina Supreme Court. She was elected Vice President of the North Carolina Bar Association in 1938. In 1939, she married Edwin T. McKeithen Jr., a graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy, and moved to New York City where she became the first woman admitted to the bar on motion in the First Judicial Department of New York State. She became affiliated with the Legal Aid Society in New York City and continued to do appellate work in the North Carolina courts until her first child was born in 1941. She subsequently devoted the next 30 years to her husband and four children. In 1950, she and her family moved to Old Greenwich where she became active in many school, church, and civic affairs. She served on District Six of the RTM for 20 years, was a trustee of the First Congregational Church, president of the Greenwich Association for Public Schools, head of the Greenwich Chapter of the American Field Service Committee, and a board member of the Y and American Red Cross. She moved, she more than lived up to the expression, civic-minded. One of her other passions was her love of classical music. She attended the performances of the Metropolitan Opera, and when not attending, she listened to their live Saturday afternoon broadcasts for all of her adult life. When her youngest child left for college, Lee resumed her legal career by joining the Greenwich Office of Cummings and Lockwood in 1968. Her husband, an executive with American Can, died suddenly of a heart attack in 1970. Three years later, she sat for and passed the Connecticut Bar Exam and was admitted to the Connecticut Bar Association just before her 60th birthday. In 1979, she was appointed by the Governor of Connecticut to the Committee on the Selection of the Judiciary, and she served there until 1986. Her starting career was highlighted again in 1980 when she became Cummings and Lockwood's first female partner. She continued as a full-time partner to the age of 75 and thereafter practiced off-council, in an off-council capacity. At the age of 90, advancing macular degeneration prompted her retirement from the firm and the practice of law. At that time, she moved to Albuquerque, New Mexico to be near her daughters Molly Reddington and Elizabeth Smith, who survived her, as do her two sons, Edward McKeithen of Thailand and R.L. Smith McKeithen of California, nine grandchildren and eight grandchildren, great-grandchildren. She is buried alongside her husband in Aberdeen, North Carolina. I remember knowingly when I first joined District Six, her gentle, friendly, southern manner was delightful, and all the while, there was this woman of extraordinary accomplishments in the field of law, who had set precedents for women for her entire life. Now therefore be it resolved that the entire membership of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting joins District Six in honoring Lee McKeithen's life and remembering her service to her community with great, with deep gratitude, and extending our sympathy to her family. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Lee McKeithen? Thank you. Robert Burns of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members and guests. My name is Bob Burns. I'm from District 10. I've been a member of the RTM for eight years and a member of the Labor Contracts Committee for six, currently serving as a Secretary to that committee. In an effort by the Labor Contracts Committee to more fully and timely communicate with the RTM, my objective this evening is to provide you with an update of the current labor negotiations underway between our town and five different unions. The first current ongoing negotiations is between the Board of Education, dealing with Launa, which represents approximately 190 para-professionals. They are coming off a three-year agreement which expired June 30th of 2010. They are currently systematically working their way through their agendas, and no major obstacles are on the horizon. It should be noted that they are working towards developing a three-year agreement consistent with the other agreements recently negotiated. The next ongoing negotiations is between the Town and the Greenwich Municipal Employee Association, which represents approximately 330 administrative and clerical employees. That contract has also expired in June of 2010, and they are coming off a one-year agreement with zero increase in the establishment of the Health Savings Account, the HSA. They too are working towards a three-year settlement, and to date, no major obstacles in the way. The third negotiations is currently being conducted with the Silver Shield, which is the police union, and they represent approximately 150 police officers. Their contract also expired at the end of June of this year, and they're coming off a three-year agreement. While striving for an agreement consistent with the other recently negotiated settlements, there are several significant challenges surfacing in these negotiations: general wage increase, establishing the HSA, moderating the current pension and retiree health benefits. Number four, the Town is currently meeting with Launa, which represents approximately 190 in the professional and middle management ranks. They also are coming off a one-year agreement, which comprised of zero increase and the establishment of the HSA, the Health Savings Account. They are currently working towards a three-year agreement consistent with the other previously negotiated settlements, and again, no major obstacles in the way. The last current labor negotiations, currently open, is between the Town and the Teamsters, who represent approximately 420 custodians, park and rec employees, and so forth. As background, it should be noted that this bargain, this unit was bargained in the summer of 2008 during the financial crises. The result of those negotiations was a 3.25% increase in July of 2008, zero increase in 2009, and a wage-only re-opener in 2010. The Town has just reached a wage re-opener settlement with the Teamsters in the amount of 2.5%. For many of us, the 2.5% increase seems to be on the high side. Let me provide some background information that will perhaps put this increase of 2.5% in some context. You recall that the very recent Farman settlement, which was decided by a panel of arbitrators, established a 3% increase for 2010. Further, to date, so far this year, throughout the state of Connecticut, there are 35 labor settlements reached, with many more still in current negotiations, where the towns and the unions involved are coming off zero increases in 2009. In those 35 settlements throughout the state of Connecticut, the first-year average increase in 2010 is 2.49%, with a low of one additional zero increase and a high of 3.25%. Further, within those 35 settlements, to date, 17 of them have settled higher, between 2.5% and 3.25%, with an average of almost 3%. While 2.5% may appear to be on the high side, the remedy, other than reaching a settlement, would have been to force the matter to binding arbitration. With a Farman's arbitration settlement of 3%, coupled with the 35 other town settlements of 2.5, and 17 of those units settling between 2.5% and 3.25%, it is my judgment that an arbitration panel would tend to recommend settling at a higher level. This particular settlement also has another very unusual twist. No action is required by the Labor Contracts Committee or the full body of the RTM. This lack of action is brought about by the fact that in the 2010-2011 budget, built into the salary account line is the guesstimate of 2.5%. With the approval of this budget previously, we provided for the funding of the wage re-opener. Additionally, the RTM would have an opportunity, or would be required to approve, any contract provision that is in conflict with the Town Charter, special acts, et cetera, and obviously with only wages discussed in these negotiations, there was no other changes that would require RTM approval. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting, and as I notified, our District and Committee Chairs, the consensus of the reporting districts was to combine items 1, 2, 3, and 5, to consider items 4 and 6 separately, but we have been notified that item 4 has been withdrawn. That is the proposed lease to the Greenwich Arts Council. But our Finance Committee, in conjunction with our First Selectmen, is proposing a sense of the meeting resolution regarding the issue of leases in general, and because that is a non-agenda item, we would first have to vote to take it up by a 2/3s vote pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. And so that is what we will proceed to do. We will first, assuming that we do combine the four items, we will dispose of those first. We will then proceed to consider whether we will take up a non-agenda item, and while if that is not a unanimous decision, we will need a recorded vote on that motion. And to save time, we will take that vote if it is to be a recorded vote, and while we are tabulating that, we will proceed with item 6, and then come back to item, to this non-agenda sense of the meeting resolution after we have disposed of all of our agenda items. All right. So, is there a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining items 1, 2, 3, and 5? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 1, 2, 3, and 5 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a 2/3s majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items 1, 2, 3, and 5 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. So, we will begin with items 1 and 2 together, proceed through those combined items, and then take up the remaining items. So, Princess Urfe, Director of Community Development, with items 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Item number one is the resolution of the Board of Estimate and Taxation appropriating the budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program for year 2011. The 2011 budget is estimated at $1,134,561.26. Item number two is the resolution of the Representative Town Meeting authorizing the First Selectmen to apply for and accept Community Development Block Grant funding to carry out the proposed activities for program year 2011. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the resolutions on item 1 and 2? Resolutions on item 1 and 2 have been moved and seconded. May we have the reports that considered this, beginning with our Health and Human Services Committee? Karen Foselyotis, Chair of that committee.
Good evening. Princess Urfe, Director of the CDBG, appeared before our committee to explain the two resolutions that are before the RTM, which are number 1 and 2 on the call. A motion was made by a member of the committee and seconded and voted of approval to consider these items together. The resolutions are being offered, as Princess Urfe said, by the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the First Select, Board of Estimate and Taxation, I'm sorry, and after their adoption, and we are supposed to hold this public hearing, which is part of this process. Princess Urfe explained the process by which the proposed 2011 Community Development Block Grant Annual One-Year Action Plan that was generated for the period starting January 1, 2011, and ending December 31, 2011. Approval of the action plan by the RTM will allow the First Selectmen to apply to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for funds for the purposes and amounts identified in the plan. In 1974 and in subsequent amendments, Congress authorized the return of tax revenues to local communities from HUD for programs identified by local communities that emphasize neighborhoods, decent housing, and suitable living environments, as well as expanding economic opportunities for persons of low and moderate income. The process requires communities to develop a consolidated plan of three years or more, and then an annual one-year action plan which acts as the funding application. The RTM previously approved a five-year consolidated plan for Greenwich on October 2009 for the period covering January 1, 2010, to December 31st, 2014. If adopted by this body, the proposed action plan that is before us becomes final, and the document is then submitted to HUD for approval within 45 days of submission. The proposed action plan that is before us tonight asks the federal government for a little over 1.1 million, that are allocated as $975,000 for new programs, $120,843.26 that are allocated for reprogrammed funds for the years 2008 and '09, and $38,718 as an annual loan, for annual loan repayments. Per HUD requirements, the action plan has been developed with citizen participation, including submission to various town agencies, nonprofit housing, and social agencies, local libraries, and media for review and comment. Copies of the action plan were mailed to all RTM members on or before September 7th, 2010, which is also required to ensure that our members had a minimum of 45 days to review the document. In discussing the plan, one committee member asked why replacing the YWCA elevator qualifies for HUD funding. Princess Urfe explained that the elevator qualifies because the domestic abuse crisis intervention services utilizes the elevator. The elevator in the building is 40 years old and has been repeatedly repaired and requires replacement. The committee then voted to combine items 1 and 2 for voting purposes. Items 1 and 2 were approved, and the committees recommending the two resolutions to the full body of the RTM by a vote 9-0-0. Districts 1, 2, and 8 were absent.
Thank you. Ms. Foselyotis? Ms. Foselyotis?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow members of the RTM, the Finance Committee met last Monday, October 18th, at 7:30 p.m. in the Town Hall Lounge. All delegates or alternates were present except for District 1. We took these items up together. Princess Urfe introduced the items and explained in detail to the committee what was involved. The committee was very familiar with it because we had reviewed a new money allocation for the CDBG last month. There was very little discussion. At the end of the night, our vote was 11-0-0 on both items. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Land Use Committee, I'm sorry, of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
I thought it'd been promoted. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took up items 1 and 2 last Monday evening. Princess Urfe appeared before our committee. We inquired of Ms. Urfe as to whether or not there are any language changes from the prior resolutions considered last year by our committee, and she reported that with the exceptions of the sums of money reported and the dates noted in the resolutions, the two items are identical to last year's. Based on the foregoing, we voted in favor of these resolutions by way of a combined vote on these two items, and the vote was as to legal order, 11-0-1. The one abstention came from District 8 member, Kip Bergweger, who explained that he abstained because he's on a board of one of the organizations that will be receiving funding from this block grant.
Thank you. At this point, I will declare a public hearing open on items 1 and 2, and we'll leave that public hearing open during the tenancy of all the combined items. So if any member of the public cares to speak, now is the time. Discussion on items 1 and 2. All right. Item 3 now comes before us.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolve that the Town of Greenwich accept a gift of two poured concrete benches with arms valued at $3,600 from Mr. and Mrs. Dick Glazebrook, Mr. and Mrs. Ray Dalio, Mr. and Mrs. Jack Weir, and Mr. and Mrs. Gerald Kuschel, all of Greenwich. And the explanatory comments have information about the nature of the gift.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 3 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Foselyotis with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
I'm back. The committee considered the resolution proposed by the Commission on Aging, which is number 3 on the October call. Sam Dibler, Commissioner for the Commission, presented a brief overview to the committee. For many years, two sisters, who were twins, Rose Marzullo and Carmela Picora, were mainstays at the senior center. Rose Marzullo drove the senior center bus before it became tag. A month before she was hospitalized and subsequently passed away, Rose could be found at the senior center making coffee and greeting people. After the sister's death, the family sought ways to remember their loved ones. They especially wanted any donation to benefit the senior center, where the sisters spent much of their time. The benches that are being given to the senior center in their memory will replace two benches on the front landing of the senior center. The current benches are on pedestals with concrete slabs as seats that are not attached, creating a safety hazard. There are also no backs or arms on the benches, making it difficult for seniors to sit and get up since there's nothing for them to hold on to. The proposed benches will have poured concrete seats and have backs and arms. They are the same general dimension as the current benches. The plans and specification have been reviewed by the Building Department and Public Works, and there will be a plaque on the benches to commemorate the sisters. One committee member asked why the benches were going to be poured concrete, as they could not possibly be comfortable for seniors. Mr. Dibosh stated that they were sure that the poured concrete will conform to people's anatomy. The benches would also conform aesthetically with the architecture of the building, and additionally, the poured concrete would be weather and vandal-proof and require minimal maintenance. The committee voted on the proposed donation of the two benches in memory of Rose Marzullo and Carmela Picora with a vote of 9-0-0. Districts 1, 2, and 8 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 3. Item 5 now comes before us. John Crary, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, resolve that the sum of $35,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to capital account number Z3112-59620-29024, known as Riversville Road Bridge.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 5 has been moved and seconded. Rick Crowell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. Public Works Committee met last Monday evening with all districts represented and voting. This item is one that we'd like to see more of, actually. This is something where the state is moving a project forward in its schedule. This was a scheduled project that we would have seen in the budget in the coming year. However, they are moving up one of the phases of this project. The preliminary design phase has been completed, and they are now moving up what they call the rights-of-way phase, where they will go and take the land that may be necessary in order to construct the bridge. There are two parcels of land, small parcels of land, that will need to be undertaken in this project. One is actually owned by the state DEP, and there is a small sliver land that is private. The Public Works Committee, Public Works Department, has been working on this project now for the past year in the design, preliminary design phase, and is now moving into the final design stages of the project and hope to complete it next year, and the rights-of-way phase needs to be completed before they can go to bid. This is a nice move on the part of the state to expedite this project. It is one that we've had on our radar. We'd like to see it move forward. The committee voted 12-0-0 to support the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince DiMarco, Chairman of our Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee met Tuesday evening and also took this item up. We felt there wasn't much new to consider since we had already talked a lot about it the previous month, and the only question was whether to move the project, whether to approve or recommend that the project be moved forward sooner rather than later, and we obviously felt that was a good idea since we were told that the bridge is in very poor condition and its load capacity is impaired. So the vote was 11-0 to approve the interim funding, and District 7 was absent for the vote. vote.
Thank you. Discussion on item 5. All right, before calling for the vote, I will once again invite anyone interested in speaking at our public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on those items and ask our district chairs to please mark your voting cards, combined items 1, 2, 3, and 5, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will now consider a motion to be offered by the Chair of our Finance Committee, Mr. Ennis, to take up a non-agenda item. Which? Yes, Lucy Krasner, District 5.
Why we are, at this point, not at the end of the meeting, I would have thought she would complete our meeting and then decide whether we want to take up any.
The, I am, I am attempting to expedite the processing of any recorded vote that we would have to take so you wouldn't have to sit around and do nothing while that vote was tabulated. We could take up the vote, proceed with item 6, and then, assuming that we wanted to take it up, we would then do so at the end of our meeting. And if we didn't want to take it up, we would then adjourn. And the more we talk about this, the more time we will waste, but...
How to pick your vote might be different depending on whether item 6 was going to take two hours or half an hour. So I'm going to...
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, the resolution is as it appears on the yellow piece of paper that was distributed to the district chairs and that you all should have. If you prefer, I will read it into the record. If not...
All right, you can summarize, though. It is a sense-of-the-meeting resolution seeking information on lease of town property to various groups at submarket rental. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Does anyone need the proposed sense-of-the-meeting resolution to be read?
Moderator, it's Clark.
Excuse me?
Clark, I'm sorry. I'm trying to hear.
All right. Hearing none, then you are making a motion to take up this non-agenda item.
That's correct.
And is that offered on behalf of your committee?
It is, and...
So it does not require a second. Discussion on, so that is currently before us. We now are considering a motion to take up the sense-of-the-meeting resolution regarding leases in general, and in order to do so, we would, we would need to vote in favor by a two-thirds majority of those present and voting, so abstentions would not be counted as present and voting. Discussion on that motion to consider a non-agenda item. Mr. Clark, District 4.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, most of us have just received this in the last half hour or so. Ordinarily, a sense-of-the-meeting resolution would be looked at by all of our committees, all of our districts, and we'd have reports on it. I'm not comfortable voting on something without that kind of free and open discussion that our system is designed to give us, so I would kind of hope that we not look at this tonight, but bring it back in December. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to take up this non-agenda item. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Finance Committee motion to take up non-agenda item. And make sure everyone is clear, if you are in favor of taking this up, which we would do at the end of the meeting after all of our agenda items have been disposed of, you should vote yes. If you are against taking that up tonight, you should vote no. And in order for this to carry, it must have a two-thirds majority vote, and as I said, abstentions will not be counted in the calculation. All right, while we are voting on that, item 6 now comes before us. Bill Drake, Chairman of our Budget Overview Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, members of town meeting. Is it appropriate, Mr. Moderator, that I read the entire item from end to end?
You may, you may read it, you may summarize it, just so the body knows and those who are watching and are present understand what we are currently dealing with.
But in the call, you have item 6. You've all read it, no doubt. Maybe I'll just, to be simple and efficient, just read, skip the whereas's, and read the resolution itself, if that's all right. The resolution is this: Be it resolved that it is the sense of the meeting that the Board of Estimate and Taxation, with the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, and all appointing authorities, develop a fiscal policy based on savings and restraint that will control the rate of spending for 2011-12 to lessen the tax burden on town residents and businesses with the following recommendations in mind: Reduce the rate of increase in the town's operating spending; lessen the rate of growth of the town burden, of the tax burden on town residents and businesses; moderate the level of debt for which the town is obligated; and improve the transparency and clarity of the budget information. So that was the sense-of-the-meeting resolution that's before you.
Thank you. We don't have discussion yet. Let's get it before us, and then I will call for the committee reports. Item 6 has been moved and offered by one of our committees and districts, so does not require a second, and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees? Mr. Drake, would you like to give the Budget Overview Committee report?
Sure, thank you. The report named background for 2011-12 Greenwich budget, which is before you, was introduced to our committee at our regular meeting on September 9. Our committee voted seven in favor, none opposed, with Districts 1, 2, 3, 4 absent, and District 10 abstaining, to suggest that additional work be carried out so that a sense-of-the-meeting resolution could be derived from the report with actionable recommendations that could be subsequently considered by our committee and referred to the full RTM. This process led to the resolution before you, which was considered by our committee on September 29. At that meeting, our committee approved this item by a vote of six in favor, none against, with two abstentions, I'll come to those, and with Districts 1, 2, 4, and 9 absent. In our discussions, the following topics were particularly noted. The facts clearly indicate that expenditures and headcount have grown substantially faster than population and school enrollment, even after inflation. We discussed refinements and caveats to the figures, but these did not modify the big-picture conclusions. Our committee recognized that the current recession's substantial negative effects called for a response. Under the present conditions, inaction by our committee did not seem a responsible action. This thorough preparation by District 7 provides the RTM with a practical and an early opportunity to carry out the RTM's responsibility to review and act on the annual budget. In keeping with our role of cooperation with the good work of other important parties, such as the First Selectmen, the Board of Estimate, and the Board of Education, we hear from RTM members who request that our committee provide analyses and actionable, votable choices such as this. This item sets a clear direction of spend, of slowing this growth of spending and taxing. Our committee's discussion also centered around the subsequent work to be done to follow up on this with recommendations at later meetings on topics such as labor contracts, capital budgeting, pension costs, and other topics. We invite the cooperation of all members on these topics. They interest everyone here, not just the Budget Overview Committee. Districts 6 and 11 abstained from their vote on this item, not because they opposed the principles of restraint in the resolution, but because they wished to see more specific recommendations in keeping with these principles, and because they thought the sense-of-the-meeting resolution should make reference to the proposed budget totals and mil rate increase in the available BET budget memo. Our committee recommends this sense-of-the-meeting resolution as a productive and necessary step. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next committee report will be Education with Bob Brady, its chair.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members, guests. The Education Committee met on Monday, October 18, together with the Land Use Committee to hear the proponents of item 6, District 7 financial policy sense-of-the-meeting resolution. Lucia Jansen and Val Stoffer of District 7, Bill Galvin of the Budget Overview Committee, Joe Pellegrino of the BET, and First Selectmen Tessie Assisted. The District 7 people said that the proposal arises from the fact that taxes per se have not been a focus of attention, and that the resolution calls for tax restraint. They asserted the townsman expressed more interest in getting rather than foregoing things in our budget, and that the town needs a new philosophy. They called for more transparency in the budget, especially with regard to payroll costs, for example, developing all-in costs for employees by department, and the capital budget providing more detail about how the rankings are developed. And finally, they expressed the need to preserve the town's AAA bond rating. Earlier in the evening, the BET discussed the resolution at its 5 o'clock meeting. Joe Pellegrino attended our meeting and summarized the BET's comments on the resolution, noting that the Select Board has no say in the budget, but that only the First Selectmen and does, and that the RTM was omitted from among the actors on this proposal. And of course, the RTM does have some say on the budget. Both items, we understood, are to be addressed in an amendment, in an amendment to this resolution, and we considered this with those in mind. Joe Pellegrino stated the draft fiscal 12 budget guidelines in the night, the draft 3 from September 8, called for a 3% mil rate increase and a 3.75% tax levy increase. The mil rate increase adjusted for the 10, the 2010 property revaluation. He said the BET has worked on the tax levy, has worked the tax levy increase to below 2.9%, and the current, as it currently is looking at it. And he reminded the committees that the RTM is the principal actor in setting the town's labor costs, as it is the body which approves or disapproves labor agreements, that the BET's obligation on labor is to figure out how to pay for them, whatever it is we approve. He also expressed his belief that the budget process is both transparent and that data is generally available to whoever asks for it, citing particularly the, the development of the CIP process over the last seven or eight years and the availability of budget information online. Mr. Tessie reiterated that the process is open, and that in response to a question agreed to work on scheduling some information meetings with the RTM. He discussed the restrictions on the town's ability to outsource tasks under its labor agreements, and that arbitration procedures are controlled at the state level, and that the town is basically not hostage to, but has to operate within the constraints of an arbitration process which is legislated in Hartford. Following the joint meeting, the Education Committee adjourned to the Hatton Room to discuss and vote on the item. Two elements of the discussion were that even as a sense-of-the-meeting resolution, it did not ask for much. On the other hand, people felt that it doesn't hurt. There was criticism of the Lucia's methodology in that it didn't consider changing demographics, nor make comparisons with other local communities, specifically Darien, New Canaan, and nearby Westchester communities. We discussed ways of strengthening a resolution, such as putting the RTM on record as to limits on labor contract rate increases, but there was no interest within the committee in taking up such an amendment. Our committee voted seven in favor, four opposed, no abstentions, with District 4 unrepresented, to recommend approval of this item. The no-votes reasons were that the resolutions were not actionable, that they may be divisive, and that basically what the resolution says is very much is in the eyes of the reader rather than in the hands of the writer. Thank you.
Thank you. Before recognizing our next committee report, let me report the votes on the two outstanding ballots that we took. On the combined items, those were items 1, 2, 3, and 5. Those in favor, 197. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 3. Those items have carried. On the motion to take up a non-agenda item, those in favor, 100. Opposed, 99. Abstaining, 2. That item has failed for lack of a two-thirds majority vote. Continuing with our committee reports on item 6, our next committee will be, if the committee chairs could decide among themselves for the order, Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening. I'll go next because, as Bob Brady just mentioned, we actually met jointly with the Education Committee to hear the authors, Lucia Jansen, along with Val Stoffer, Bill Galvin, and we also had, and as he said, we had Joe Pellegrino, we had Peter Tessie, our First Selectmen. So, but I, so I won't repeat what Bob said, I'll just add a few points. One is, Ms. Jansen emphasized that her concern is over the, and the concern of this resolution is over the operating budget, not the capital budget. And if you look at the resolution, you'll see that it does single out the operating budget. She, her, her analysis does suggest that there is considerable fat, if you will, in, in fire, police, and schools. She did make an exception for our land use agencies, where there has been little growth and where, and we, she agreed that town expenses might actually have been better controlled over all these years if the town had more planning staff. She declined to offer an opinion, however, about whether the town would benefit by separating planning from zoning. The, when Mr. Pellegrino spoke, as Bob said, he, they, he, they said that what the BET mostly hears from constituents at meetings like the one they're going to hold tomorrow night is about the, I'm sorry, it's the First Selectmen's meeting tomorrow night on the, on the capital budget. But mostly what they hear about is the additional services that residents want, and so he indicated that the RTM does need to indicate what costs and services can be reduced. And to that, Ms. Jansen did not respond, I mean, other than, she did not want to indicate where she thought the reductions could be made, and, and as you know, the resolution does not do that. So our vote, we took this up after the joint meeting. We viewed the language as being rather benign despite the rather alarming message in Ms. Jansen's study. Our vote therefore was 11-0-1, with District 3 abstaining.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. The Parks and Recreation Committee took up item 6 with Lucia Jansen present, and she's our vice chair of Parks and Rec Committee, and John Dolan, who's an alternate presenting the resolution. The vote was 9-1-0, with Districts 1 and 11 absent, and District 5 voted no. I'm not going to review, so many of the points have already been made, I'll just give a brief report. Lucia reviewed the entire report and gave extensive details as to how the analysis and how the historical data had been put together. It was emphasized that this is an attempt at having a philosophy of how to work out the budget. Several members asked about the impact on the Parks and Rec budget. We didn't get a really specific answer, other than Parks and Rec has already taken reductions, and that broad reductions across all departments was not the intent. However, we know some BET members still look at Parks and Rec for reductions. We all felt it was a worthwhile exercise to consider the report. One person was very concerned about the impact on the CIP if further reductions were made. He also worried about possible cuts to fire, police, and teachers, and therefore voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance... Gordon Nemitz, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee considered this item at its meeting last Monday in Town Hall Lounge. All districts were present except for District One. This was the second time the committee met to discuss this report. We spent a considerable amount of time during the September cycle, and became very familiar with what it had to say, and developed several positions with respect to the content and the implications of it. There was a discussion at the committee this past week about amending. Some of the language, those amendments have been addressed in the motion that is before us tonight. One of them was the change of the First Selectman from the Board of Selectmen. That was accomplished. There were several remarks that became memorable during debate on this item, and I'll just run through a few of them so you get a flavor of it. One was, of course, that the RTM was absent as a player in the bodies that should address this issue. Another, the SOMR is very nice, but how is it different than the budget guidelines? Operating costs are increasing four to six percent a year, year after year, and in fact, the initial draft of the budget guidelines for 2012 fiscal year indicates an increase of six percent. The only way to reduce operating expenses substantially is to adjust employee cost components such as headcount, average compensation, and benefits, or increasing efficiency. The report's intent is simple: first, energize people, and second, promote a data-driven conversation versus an emotional one. We witnessed a systemic change in the national economy, and this presentation provides clarity for town citizens. The RTM approved all past budgets. Why approve it if you don't agree? The specific budget recommendations in the report are valid, and frankly, should be implemented immediately. At the conclusion of our September meeting, the committee passed a resolution by a vote of twelve zero zero, directing the Chairman of the Committee to work with the Budget Overview Committee and members of District Seven and other members of the RTM to solicit a response from the First Selectmen, the BET, and the Board of Ed that answers the questions and addresses the issues raised in the report. The Finance Committee was not entirely comfortable with the wording of the resolution, but did understand that the report itself would act as a strong catalyst in generating debate and discussion within the RTM and the town generally. At the end of the evening, our vote was eight, two, and one. The vote on Item Six as amended included District Nine's no vote because she wanted to see a no service cuts, District Ten because the resolution is riddled with inaccuracies, illogicality, and not worthy of the RTM. That's got to get a laugh. I mean, that's probably the best line we've had in the Finance Committee all year. And finally, there was one abstention from District Four because the SOMR missed the point of the report, which is, why and how did this happen? The committee, I think, generally says that we have to address the operating cost increase of four to six percent. That's out of sync with all other numbers in our society. Also, we think that the body of management reports available to the RTM and to the BET and to the town officials generally are inadequate. They're not up to the kinds of standards that we would find in even a small corporation. And finally, an affirmative vote on this item will ultimately help us with rating agencies like Moody's. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointments Committee met this evening just before the RTM, seven thirty. All districts represented, except for District Nine was absent. We discussed the Item Six before us. Our vote was seven in favor, one opposed, and three abstentions. The person who was opposed was fearful that this kind of initiative would lead, in the long run, when everything rolled out, to cuts in our capital expenses, which were, of course, of vital importance to the town, and was, I think, concerned that the sense of the meeting would have unintended consequences, at least by the proponents and some of the people that may be supporting it. The abstentions were Districts Eight, Ten, and Twelve. I abstained. I have serious reservations, along with District Five and others, but I particularly am proud of and value my friendship with District Seven. I wouldn't do a thing to harm it, so I abstained. Thank you.
Rick Crowell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. The Public Works Committee met last Monday evening to consider this item. All districts were represented. The item was ably presented by our committee secretary, Linda Bruno, from District Seven, and joining her was also our committee alternate from District Seven, Margaret Freiberg. They basically reiterated a lot of the points that have already been made. We had a very spirited discussion for over an hour and fifteen minutes, and many points were discussed, ranging from the capital budget through operating and union negotiations and fixed costs. I've been in the RTM almost fifteen years now and not seen an item that has brought so much spirited debate from each individual member of a committee. So there was a lot of interaction, a lot of good points that were made and discussed that have already been brought out with the other committee members. I will say that the item has brought to light a number of items that we'll be looking at as we go through the budget process. Mrs. Bruno and Ms. Freiberg wanted to make sure, and the committee to understand, and the RTM to understand, that the main purpose of this resolution was to encourage effort among all town departments and boards, as well as the RTM, to examine spending at the start of the budget process, rather than in the spring when we're crammed into a timeframe that we have to respond in a very short period of time, and that this was an initial step, hopefully, in moving forward to a better process as things develop in a more transparent state, in clearer state, with the different committees and boards that undertake the budget. We took a vote on this item. The vote was eight, one, three. The eight votes in favor were very supportive, and our delegate from District Ten wanted to make sure that he was a resounding yes, but felt as though that the sense of the meeting did not go far enough. The no vote was our delegate from District Twelve, who believed that there is a lack of reality in the budget process, and many expenditures are fixed, and certain assumptions regarding the pension plan are unrealistic. He does not believe that the sense of the meeting fits into the current budget mechanism. The three abstentions were District One, District Eight, and District Eleven. We abstained at that time feeling as though we had heard of different concerns regarding the sense of the meeting resolution, yet there was no one there to represent those concerns at our meeting. I will say that I was having trouble finding anybody that wanted to come and advocate for higher taxes and more spending, so it was not an easy position to fill. But there were some other information, some other data coming out that they felt they wanted to consider prior to putting a vote forward on the sense of the meeting resolution at that time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Karen Poselyotis, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
As a member of District Seven, which is cosponsoring the resolution, the committee chair, myself, recused herself from the discussion and turned over the chair to the Vice Chair, Alexis Vulgaras, who then ran this portion of the meeting. The chairperson, myself, did remain to take notes on the discussion that followed. In the interest of public disclosure, the chair, myself, did offer suggestions as to how the town might think outside the box to reduce town expenditures prior to the formal presentation by Peg Freiberg and Linda Bruno from District Seven, and prior to discussion by the committee, but the chair did not participate in the subsequent discussion or vote. That being said, I was asked by the chair to give this presentation, the vice chair, to give this presentation, who's a little shy, so that's why I'm here tonight. Peg Freiberg, as I said, and Linda Bruno, District Seven, gave a brief overview of the resolution and the supporting documentation that was prepared by Lucia Jansen. Valerie Stauffer, Chair of District Seven, was not present for the beginning of the discussion, but was present for clarification of some points toward the end of the meeting. A concern was first forwarded by one committee member that the resolution is, quote, "motherhood and apple pie." How could you not support it? But then expressed the fear that there might be unintended consequences as a result of the resolution calling for moderating increases. The feeling is that without the resolution calling for specific cuts, whatever they may be, it will only give ammunition for cutting programs, personnel, et cetera, that might ultimately be valuable to the town. Also, one member felt that it is not the RTM's job to set the budget agenda. It's up to the BET to do so, and if RTM members wanted input into the budget process, they should attend the BET budget meetings and give their input there. A few questions arose as to what cuts are envisioned by the resolution. Again, the concern is that a department, such as the Health Department and Commission on Aging, which many feel are bare-bones, might be targeted for further cuts instead of other departments or commissions which should be scrutinized more. Those that supported the resolution stated that the RTM needs to begin to be more critical of the budget that is presented to this body. When cuts are proposed, the body generally does not support them, and to a great extent, the motion is defeated. Social Services was mentioned as an example of a department that might do a better accounting for their clientele and time and budget. The conversation also focused on what moderation in spending means. One suggestion was that in order to determine whether there is excess spending in town government, a department should be chosen for review. That department would start at zero-based budgeting, and then justify their budget, salary, personnel expenditures, et cetera, line by line. There was also discussion as to the town thinking outside of the box to save money on contracts, shift the burden to private-public projects such as parks, or possibly finding other funding in federal grants or other grants. It was pointed out that the RTM also has to do a better job of tracking and challenging capital expenditures, although there is no talk of doing away with any of the proposed capital projects, against the original BET budgeted amount. The committee voted on the proposed sense of the meeting resolution, three in favor, six against, District One, Two, and Eight absent. The positive votes felt there was a need to begin the process of reining in expenditures, and this was a mechanism for allowing our town leaders and the RTM to hear the message. The negative votes felt that there could be unintended consequences as a result of this resolution, that it was, quote, "motherhood and apple pie," without offering specific cuts, and that it is the BET's responsibility to set the budget, after presentation by the various departments and commission, and present the budget to the RTM. The vice chair, as I said, asked me to present this, which is why I am giving this report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took up this item last Monday evening. Alice Duff from District Seven, as well as our Legislative and Rules Committee member, Donald Hamilton, also from District Seven, addressed this item. There followed a general discussion among our members about our budgetary problems and our growing tax burden without any particular resolution. Neither member from District Seven could tell our committee what persons or entities were described by the phrase that is within the body of the SOMR, which states "all appointing authorities." Perhaps that can be addressed by the proponent this evening. Our committee chose to review this matter as to legal order only, because this is a sense of the meeting resolution and is advisory only. We unanimously felt that the resolution was in legal order. Our vote was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Greg Fruman, Vice Chair of our Town Services Committee.
So generally, this is the time when you do the seventh inning stretch, so if anybody wants to stand. Town Services took this item up. Valerie Stauffer presented to us. We had almost exactly the same discussion that every other committee has reported on, so with your indulgence, I'm not going to repeat it. Our vote was eight in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. The abstention was from District Nine, who's in favor of the idea, but feels that this is already our job and we're sort of just duplicating efforts. District Six felt that we have significantly larger underlying problems which should be addressed first, and as I said, the other districts voted in favor. And the only other thing to mention is, it was brought to our attention that it's also Mercedes Blackson's birthday today, so if everyone could wish her a happy birthday.[1506.13][1506.13](APPLAUSE).
Vince DiMarco with the Transportation Committee report.
Similar report we had, we didn't have a representative of the resolution there, but our alternate Transportation Committee member from District Nine and BOC Vice Chair Steve Orzola explained the resolution and the genesis of the study and report it was derived from. He and other Transportation Committee members reported discussion and arguments from the Monday evening committees and email correspondence, which everyone by then had seen, and our discussion was among those points, were among our discussion as well. So I'll just give you, the vote was eight in favor, three against, and one abstention. The comments on the reasons behind the no-votes, you've heard it before, believed that the SOMR is not needed since the town departments were already dealing with the recommendations. The resolution is vague. It has no teeth, no required response. The problems were not clearly defined, and the resolution is limited to the 211, 212 time period, and it should be framed as applicable into the future. The abstention was just that someone was on the fence for a lot of the reasons that other people abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Stauffer, Chair of District Seven.
In behalf of District Seven, I'm offering an amendment to the SOMR. District Seven met on Thursday, October 21st, at our regular district meeting, and this amendment, which has been distributed to all committee members. I'm only going to read the part where there are changes. There are four minor changes, although subs- of significance, so I'll go through it. We voted seventeen zero zero as a district to present this. Now, therefore, be it resolved that it is the sense of the meeting that the Board of Estimate and Taxation, BET, with the Board of Education, BOE, striking out the words "the Board of Selectmen, BOS," and substituting the First Selectman, also adding the words "the RTM," and going on in the original language, and all appointing authorities develop a fiscal policy based on savings and restraint that will control the rate of spending for 2012, 2011, '12, and then adding the phrase "and budgets going forward," then back to the original language, to lessen the tax burden on town residents and businesses with the following recommendations in mind. There are four bullet points. The fourth is the one where there's a change. Reduce the rate of increase in towns' operating spending. Lessen the rate of growth of the tax burden on town residents and businesses. Moderate the level of debt for which the town is obligated, and striking out the words, "improve the transparency and clarity of the budget information," substituting the phrase, "improve the communication of relevant budget information." Thank you.
Thank you. That is a motion to amend Item Six, being offered on behalf of one of our districts, therefore does not require a second. Discussion on the District Seven motion to amend. Dr. Carlson, District One.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Pardon? No? Okay. Ms. Stauffer?
Yes. I'll just explain the reasons for the changes. Legally, the First Selectman is empowered with the role of the budget, not the Board of Selectmen. That's the first revision. Addition, we added the words "the RTM" because we felt, and almost all the committees felt, that it was appropriate that the RTM be listed with the responsibility and involvement in this process. We added the phrase "and budgets going forward" after 2011, '12, because the goal is to have this an ongoing program, philosophy. And then the final one, the fourth bullet point, improve the transparency and clarity of the budget information. In no way did we mean to cast criticism at the budget book, but we wanted to make it a little clearer that we wanted more relevant budget information in there that would help us all as we go through the budget process.
Thank you. Further discussion... Further discussion on the motion to amend only. All right, we can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the proposed amendment offered by District Seven?
Yes.
All right, then we will need to proceed with a record vote. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Questions.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District Seven, motion to amend Item Number Six, and proceed to poll your delegation. If you are in favor of the proposed amendment, obviously you vote yes. Those against should vote no. Now while we are voting, we can continue with discussion on the merits of Item Six because in my judgment, the proposed amendment is not going to change that discussion in any meaningful way. So, discussion on Item Six. Lucia Jansen, District Seven. To be followed by John Blankley, District Ten.
So, good evening, Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, BET members, and RTM members. My name is Lucia Jansen. I am District Seven representative and the lead author of the Historical Budget Report. I wanted to start off by saying what a pleasure it's been to meet so many of you and to hear the wisdom and the insight that's out there in regards to this particular topic. So this has been an incredibly valuable process, and the main goal was a catalyst for discussion. And as the committee report chair said, there was definitely discussions, so it certainly achieved the objective in the overall mission. In terms of the motivation for the report, and I think the urgency for this sense-of-the-meeting resolution, is the economic crisis of 2008. If we believe that the 2008 crisis was an aberration, and this economy has rebounded fully, and that we don't have the trillion-dollar national deficit, and that our state economy doesn't have a $3.4 billion deficit going in into the operating budget, and that Greenwich is immune to this situation, then the budget can stay status quo. What this status, this sense-of-the-meeting resolution is trying to convey is that we, as RTM members, along with our first selectman and BET, we work collaboratively, proactively, in this new economic context, that we do not bury our head and say, "What's going on in the external world doesn't have an impact to Greenwich." So the sense-of-the-meeting resolution is very simply to admit that we are having to deal with this proactively, this economic crisis. And I would, I would beg you to find the thought leader, the business leader, the analysts out there, the economists, that thinks that this economy is not in for a long haul in terms of real rebound and recovery. Are we in a panic? No. That's the good fortune for Greenwich. We do have the good fortune to spend the time to not be working in a panic. This is an opportunity for us, as residents, to take this and work with the wonderful information that is out there. And I do want to mention, since I was able to work with many of our town departments, the Finance Department, the Board of Education Department, even our state level, in order to get the data of this report, they were all very eager, very open, and very willing to share the data. But it is buried, so it is a time-consuming, labor-intensive process. Since we have this opportunity, we have this time, let's spend it. It is not, I'm not trying to say here just because we're not in a panic, we don't aggressively go after this, we don't persevere, we don't attack the problem, but we're not in a panic. There is no need for rash judgment, rash decision. I want to acknowledge the good work that has occurred in this town. This town is a can-do town. I think we embody the can-do American spirit in this town. You look around, and I look around, and now I've learned, I've gotten to know more of you. The volunteers in this town who put in tremendous amount of time and money is amazing, and this town has made tremendous progress, particularly in the budget. When you look at labor, for example, we have switched from a defined benefit to a defined contribution plan for new employees. We have 401K plans in the pension to replace certain pension plans, healthcare plans. The issue is, is it enough? If 60% to 70% of the budget is in labor, I don't know how many in this room feel comfortable in knowing the cost of labor per worker in this town. And when I say that, I mean wage, pension, healthcare, and other benefits. Just as any other employer looks at an employee, the town adds to have a consolidated, clear view of that cost. What was interesting to learn is the BET is not responsible for labor. So when we want to start pointing fingers, guess who's responsible? The RTM! So, the first selectman is the other entity. So the reality is, yes, we are working on it, as some people have noted. The RTM has been involved, but the BET can't address certain areas. They need our support. They need our collected, unified vision here. They can't do this alone. We also understand from our meetings, our district meetings, that this is not our, Greenwich is not unique here. Fairfield County is having similar problems. We need to collectively work with our Fairfield County leaders and address this problem because it is a problem. Public sector wages versus private is a problem. So we know the sense-of-the-meeting resolution is not binding, is not legally binding, but it is what's needed for our leaders to hear. Our rhetoric as a body has not matched our votes. When the report looked at 40 years of budget increase, the RTM was part of those votes, just like the BET and the first selectman and the BOE. Every one of us have been involved. That is why this sense-of-the-meeting resolution, this instrument, was designed perfectly for this kind of message, which is, we are collectively admitting we have to work on this. This is not pointing fingers, this is not saying, "This entity suffers, this one doesn't." This is a collective work, group work effort. So I know in our culture today, we're supposed to be on opposing sides. That's the nature of the discussion today, unfortunately. But if we're going to work on this and solve this, we really are going to have to find a middle ground. But let's do it frankly, openly, working with the data, compassionately, looking at the moral, the legal, the budgetary aspects of this. That's why the community needs to get involved with this. I want to address the state mandates. It's an area we hear a lot about as our district made the meetings. Yes, our town, like other towns, have state and federal mandates. There was another municipality just as interested in this issue as ours, Bristol, Connecticut. I don't know if they're in our DRGB, but in terms of the BOE numbers of state mandates, they looked into it. How much are state mandates affecting our budget? I asked that of our town numbers, and we couldn't get an answer. That's an answer we should know. Bristol, Connecticut, has done it. Bristol's BOE budget showed that is 101 million. Of 101 million, 14 million is to state mandates. They itemized all the partial mandates and all the unfunded mandates. That represents 15% of their budget. I don't know what our numbers are here in Greenwich, but I think we should know that number in order to know, how much are those mandates costing us and how much is not about I wanted to address some of the comments that came out of the committee reports. When people asked why there were no specific solutions, because again, the sense-of-the-meeting resolution is to admit we have a problem first. Second, and more importantly, the RTM is to work in conjunction with the first selectman. The first selectman's job is this area. So we can collaborate and work in a consensus manner, but I think we do need to define our roles. The other one, in terms of the capital expenditures. One of the compelling outcomes of this report was the disproportionate spend in operating versus capital, and there are many unmet capital projects. We need to look at, how do we address those capital projects? And operating is the area that appears to be the source. This report that I worked on was not with a staff of people, and so there needs to be much more research, much more analysis, but there seems to be data stating that we are underfunding capital to operating. In terms of us having a surprise in the budget that we have these cuts, I challenge you, the RTM. The town leaders are going to be working with us. We are not removed from the process. We are not exempt from the process. If there is a surprise, it's because we didn't get involved. The BET holds meetings, public meetings where people can speak and learn and share, so we are part of that process. There should be no surprises. And I think if there's anything we learn from this, is that we need to learn and dig into the numbers. The easy solution would be a flat, across-the-board cuts. Let us hope that is not the case, given that we know the data is telling us where the So let me just conclude by saying, you make the difference. It's not someone else in this room, it's you. Don't look to the other guy. This isn't the time to have apathy. Nothing changes. We have mandates, we have regulations, we have, nothing will change. That's not Greenwich. I've lived here 20 years. My husband and I've lived here 20 years. That's not the Greenwich I know. This is a Greenwich that fights and gets involved and cares about its community. To vote abstention is to vote no. So District Seven, we, we as a district ask that you be part of the collective voice that says no more tax and spend policies, and to be ready to participate quickly in the next action steps after the RTM vote. And I would like to conclude this evening with a heartfelt thanks to District Seven members, particularly Valerie Stauffer, the chair, who, the moment that she learned of this over the summer in the beautiful sunshine, spearheaded this and has been relentless since. So thank you, Valerie. Thank you.[1500.51][1500.51](APPLAUSE).
Lucy Krasner, for what purpose do you rise?
At this point, it might be appropriate to set a time limit on the speakers to follow.
All right. That, that would be a point of information. It, it would be in order to make a motion to limit debate. Let me just say, in the absence of a limit, while Roberts Rules does talk about a general limit of 10 minutes, that only applies in non-legislative assemblies. So since we are a legislative body, we can't rely on that 10-minute limit applying in all cases. So if we want, if we want to enact a limit, we need to do it, and it would be in order. Do you have such a motion?
I would like to propose that all three of the speakers' comments be delivered in three seconds.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to limit debate in the form of a three-minute limit on all speakers. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate on this item to three minutes per speaker, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion has carried. Mr. Blankley, District Ten. To be followed by Peter Quigley, District Seven.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, I do feel slightly singled out by that last vote, but you'll be relieved to hear that I did have a long version and a short version. I came armed with the short version. And I rise to speak against motherhood and apple pie. Somebody has to do it. I am also, I believe some of you may be aware that I am the author of an email piece called "The Rejoinder," which was a response to the original PowerPoint presentation that Lucia put out. I would say there was one point on which I did agree with Lucia, and that is that the SOMR is non-binding. The SOMR, however, in spite of all that, it does have significance. What with newspaper articles, the PowerPoint presentation, and so forth, it's clear that we're being sold something, and in my view, we're being sold a pop. Over the 27 years that I've been in this town, I've seen my taxes decline by 50% from 2% of my original property value to less than 1%, which of course is a measure to some degree of the increase in wealth that we have enjoyed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please allow the speaker's opportunity to use his remaining minute and five, two minutes and five seconds.
A measure of the degree of increase in wealth which we have enjoyed in this town, both on the capital side, and I may say those numbers are repeated also on the income So did I miss something as far as the increase in taxes is concerned? Who are these profligates in the BET? What have they been doing with my money over these years? So those of you who read my Rejoinder will know that I took exception to the sensationalized number progressions shown without context, comparisons of spending to town employee headcount, which implied bloat, if you will, without at all recognizing the growth of state and federal mandates over the years, and the hugely changing nature of the town, all of which demands more town services. This is the kind of context that we ought to use for looking at these numbers. And I believe that we are getting value from the money that we spend. Take any number progression over the years, and you can produce a shock effect, which is what the PowerPoint was designed to do. It's not any basis on which to mount a criticism of the town's financial management. Thus I submit that the trends are not bad. Why then are we fretting about taxes? The answer lies, I think, in this perception about a bad economic climate and a misguided projection of national issues onto the local scene. It turns out that the trends in Greenwich are up. One of the whereas clauses in the SOMR.
Thirty seconds.
Mentions lower projected revenues. Just isn't so. Revenues from sources such as conveniences are up. This is good for Greenwich. The National Bureau of Economic Research told us that the recession was over in the middle of 2009. Barrons this week reported that Wall Street bonuses will be a record for the second year in 2012. in a row. This is good for Greenwich. Retail sales are up, good for Greenwich Avenue. The influence of the GOP on the 2nd of November will undoubtedly result in the extension of Bush tax cuts.
Thank you, Mr. Blankley.
So, join me in rejecting the SOMR. I had just a few more brief remarks, but join me in rejecting the SOMR and stand for our current policies. We're getting the balance right between keeping taxes low and spending is being done just right by the BET. Thank you.
Peter Quigley, District 7, to be followed by Michael Wasek, District 11.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow colleagues. My name is Peter Quigley. I am with District 7. I reside on North Street. What's wrong with voting for motherhood and apple pie? Why wouldn't we vote to endorse this affirmative document to support our BET in their efforts to lessen the tax burden, the tax levy, by setting reduced targets of mill rate increases, as in fact the BET has already done to the 2.9 percent mill rate? Why wouldn't the RTM endorse the efforts for physical restraint and give the BET a voice in its negotiation when managing the bulging operating side of the budget and to find the necessary funds to invest? We don't hear much about investment in the town, but to invest on the capital side of the budget on projects such as the high school auditorium, fire stations, roads, bridges, and a small thing called storm drain infrastructure repair? Why wouldn't we vote for this SOMR as demonstration to the public in our constituencies that town-appointed and elected officials are concerned and are managing financial affairs to meet both the short and long-term needs of the community? Thank you.
Incidentally, I do have the result of the vote on the District 7 motion to amend Item 6. Those in favor, 178; opposed, 14; abstaining, 7. So, that amendment has carried, and we are now discussing the amended resolution. Mr. Wasek, to be followed by Bill Galvin, District 7.
Mike Wasek, District 11. I am also a member of the Labor Contracts Committee and an alternate to the Budget Overview Committee. In fact, I was one of the two abstentions in the BOC vote. My problem with this resolution is that I can't tell what message the first selectman, the BET, the BoE should take away if the RTM passes this resolution, other than that the RTM members are upset. It's venting. It's an expression of rage. But the expression, the words of the resolution, reduce the rate of growth in the town's operating spending, compared to what? Compared to last year? Compared to last year's budget or last year's expected actual spend? Compared to the BET's spending guidelines, budget guidelines? Compared to what? Just to give you some facts on the current year's budget, 2011, the budget calls for operating spending of about 312 million. According to Draft 6 of the BET budget guidelines for next year, we're on track for about 302 actual. So, about 10 million under budget. Now, if you look at the first, the projected 2012 budget, again, Draft 6, we're looking at 327 million operating. That's 5 percent over the current budget, but it's 8.4 percent over the projected actual spend. I mean, I think those numbers are high, and my preference would have been to put in some numbers, but this body seems allergic to the idea of actually talking about numbers. Lessen the rate of growth in the tax burden compared to what? Compared to the past or compared to what the BET draft guidelines are suggesting? I think it would have been more effective if the resolution had been framed in terms of compared to last year, compared to last year's budget, compared to absolute levels, as opposed to just the, we'd like less. I want, I'm going to vote in the end, I'm going to vote for this resolution, even though I think it's imperfect.
Thirty seconds.
Because I think it's important to send at least that vague message to our town officials, our selectmen and the BET and BoE. But I fear that the BET will take away that we're just objecting to their latest draft guidelines. And if the budget comes in at 8.3 percent over the projected actual spend, they will have achieved the will of the RTM. And I don't really think that's adequate. I think the RTM could have and should have been more specific, not in identifying what exactly to cut...
Thank you.
But in identifying the broad levels of spending and taxes that we wish the BET and others to aim for. Thank you.
Bill Galvin, District 7, to be followed by Dr. Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, Bill Galvin, District 7. My first reaction, and I think a point that I'd like to mention that might cause you to get up to the 100,000-foot level, which is where this SOMR was intended, and that is, you're not in Kansas anymore, Dorothy. The world is a very different place. Comment has been made a few times. But with all deference to the rejoinder by Mr. Blankley, I would say that I agreed with about 99 percent of what he said, except that it's all looking in the rearview mirror. I've lived in this city, this town, since 1971. My taxes in cash terms have continued to go up. The reason they haven't gone up dramatically is that our grand list in this town, as you all know, has gone from $4 billion, inflation-adjusted, to $34 billion. That has given us a lot of cover to keep our taxes low, the lowest in the state. We also have the highest rate of increase in our property values in the state. That's why we've been able to do what we've been able to do in our taxes. But with the grand list slowing down, which most people who look at the numbers as opposed to have an opinion, if you look at the numbers, the grand list is slowing down. Some say it may even plateau for a bit. At the same time, our pension costs are going up mostly unrestrained because so much of it is out of our control. Our healthcare costs are going up mostly unrestrained because that largely is out of our control. Our union contracts, many of them are still in place and have three, four, or five years to go, largely out of our control. Costs are locked in. All this sense of the meeting resolution was intended to do is to say, folks, we, the RTM, who are the voting body here, have to get involved in this entire process, not in March or April, but now. And I would say this sense of the meeting resolution has already been a great success, judging by the amount of debate and discussion that's taken place in the last month. I mean, more people have been talking about this subject than I would suspect any other combination of subjects in town in the last month. It has generated a lot of, as one of our speakers said, spirited debate. That's terrific.
I think we're under 30 seconds.
Our intention, as has been suggested many times, should have been to make it more specific. We should have suggested cuts. We should have said, yes, cut the police, yes, cut the teachers. That's not the intention. The intention here is to get all of us to focus on the financial underpinnings of this town government, get involved, have the reasoned debate, make choices, and then vote. And we'll all be way ahead. Thank you.
Dr. Carlson, to be followed by Bob Brady, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, in the years that James Lash was first selectman, it was established by the Board of Estimant and Taxation that we'd have approximately a 3.5 percent increase per year in our tax rate. These years were rich years. There were years of much building in the town of Greenwich. Those years were very comfortable years. For the past three years, we've had deflation. We've also had the continuation of 3.5 percent tax increases. But the 3.5 percent tax increases are all real. They're in real money, above the inflation rate. The inflation rate is negative in the deflation. The deflation is the problem. I was very dispirited in this room on Budget Night 2008 because I didn't think the RTM had acted in a defensive manner, seeing that Bear Stearns had failed a few months before and that I thought there might be some real trouble in the next few years. What needs to be done by the leadership of the town, and the RTM is the ultimate deciding body for the town, is to make a scheme to look forward and protect the citizens of the town. What needs to be done at this time is to make a scheme in terms of the taxation that will not push a person out of their house. And those are middle-class and working people. Now, in the budget resolution, there are these two statements. One has been corrected. The old one was, improve the transparency and clarity of budget information. This has been improved to improve the communication of relevant budget information. This summer, the Greenwich Times published the news on July 28th, Thompson Town Raises, raises for the highest-paid town workers. I thought to myself, could I have only known where that money was on Budget Night? I should have stood up here and asked you to take it out. Look at the beautification of Town Hall over the last few years. Had I known where that money was, I would have asked the RTM to take it out.
Thirty seconds.
I think we very much need this proposal for the people of Greenwich, and we need the BET and others responsible to do a very much better job, including ourselves, for the people of Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Brady, District 5, to be followed by Rob Perelli-Mannetti, District 12.
Good evening once again. I'm asking you to vote against motherhood and apple pie. The resolution does not say what to do. It's not actionable, as one member of the Education Committee said. This resolution, when it comes to the first selectman, when it comes to the BET, even when it comes back to us, does not tell us what to do. It has some ideas, some generalities, but it doesn't tell us what to do, nor does it tell anyone else what to do. So, if we're serious about this, we should be working on being specific. It should be a parallel, if you will, perhaps to the BET budget guidelines, which state what we expect to see in terms of a tax levy and what we expect to see in budgets for specific parts of the town. If we're unwilling to do that work, then we should sit back, spend our time working at the budget meetings with the respective departments with which we work, understand those budgets, and be able to report back to this body next spring what it all means. I do believe the budget process is open. I also go to a lot of meetings, but you do have to attend those meetings to see that. Last month, we voted to reject a rule which would have established, on a test basis, a committee to review and report on the entire capital budgeting process. Now, I don't know why people voted no on that, but it would have, if we had adopted it, it would have required some of the members to do some work. Clearly, they don't have to now. I don't think we're serious. I urge you to turn down this resolution. Perhaps there is another resolution out there which better states what we want to do. This one doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Perelli-Mannetti, District 12, to be followed by Mariana Pons-Cohen.
Good evening. I'd like to first address a couple of points made by my friend John Blankley. And first of all, when he talked about income growth in Greenwich, that isn't true for everybody in Greenwich. And I think we need to be cognizant that there's a fairly significant part of the town that has not had great income growth, especially our seniors, and who are not in a position to be paying tax increases every year. Secondly, I agree with my friend John that the study that Lucia did, which is very helpful, does not take into account, as she acknowledged, the various state and federal mandates that have come into place over the past 40 years and the changes in the town's demography. I think that John is absolutely right about that point, but what is not clear is what those changes have meant. Are we now getting bang for our buck? Are we spending our money wisely? And until we do a further analysis to determine how those mandates have affected the budget and how changes in services have affected the budget, I don't think we can confidently say that we're getting our money's worth, as John seems to think. One of the reasons that I think that this is very important is because as we sit in the budget process, the greatest portion of our costs are labor. And yet, no one wants to see teachers cut, no one wants to see anyone cut. And yet, every year, we have these contracts. Under the existing contract procedure, the unions have virtually no incentive to negotiate in good faith to keep costs down. They simply don't because they know they can go to arbitration and Greenwich is going to get its butt kicked in arbitration. It happens every time. The only thing we can do is we sit here, when we get the budget, and we listen to the labor contract negotiators who tell us, well, you know, if you don't vote for this, it's going to go back to arbitration again, or it's going to go to arbitration, and we'll lose. Well, so, and the RTM approves it. Well, yeah, so it's true that the RTM has approved the budgets and all the labor contracts, but that's because we don't think we have any alternative that's realistic. Unfortunately, the only real alternative that we have to an increasing share of our funds going to operating expenses for contracts is essentially a meat X.
Thirty seconds.
The only thing we're really in a position to do is say, no, we will only spend dollars X. Now, I don't know that we're there yet, but I think we need to understand the situation much better, and I think that this resolution is an excellent first step towards getting us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana Pons-Cohen, member of the Board of Education, to be followed by Chris von Keiseling, District 8.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am here in my individual capacity as a resident of Greenwich and also as an individual spokesman and board member of the Board of Ed. I have heard the debate. I come here with interest. I support the resolution. And the reason I support the resolution is because I think it's a starting point, and it doesn't purport to be more than that. There are a couple of things that I've heard tonight that make me want to respond. I think it's correct what the gentleman before me said about the deck is stacked against us in arbitration in Connecticut with respect to labor contracts. So, to some extent, we have no choice but to accept the outcome. I think we really do need to, the numbers may be incorrect, the first selectman can correct me, but I think, is it 80 percent of the people in Greenwich don't have school-aged children? Is that the correct number, roughly? I think it's roughly. And then, the 20 percent that do, 73.7 percent send them to public schools, which means roughly 26 percent do not. So, we're talking about, and we're, from the Board of Ed standpoint, we're between 50 percent and 60 percent of the budget. And I think in preparing this year's budget, we're talking about 10.1 to teachers, to, I mean, students-to-teacher ratio as opposed to 10.2, which we've had historically. I think there is room, and I think we really, and I have, education is my passion. It's been something that I care for tremendously, but I think that we also need to... But I think that we also need to think about our town, and it's not pleasant to think about where we should make the cuts, but I think it's the responsible and prudent thing to consider. And I think, as Ms. Jansen said earlier, we have to do it in a moral way. We have to think of those who need our help and those who may need the extra push. And then, I also think we need to think of the citizens who live on a fixed income, who live on Social Security, who are elderly, and they do comprise the 80%. And it's every district in our town, it's not just the demographics, every district is different.
Thirty seconds.
Whether you're District 1 or Districts 2, 3, 4, 5, going to 10, 11, and 12, we are all different, and we all bear responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Von Kaiseling, to be followed by Irv Porter.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Americans. I was hoping I'd be the last speaker, leave you with a nice, happy taste in your mouth. First of all, I think you have to understand that all of the things I've heard tonight are not necessarily in conflict. It's everybody looking at the same set of figures from a different point of view. I was going to be like our dear friends Fred Sibley and wear some kind of a gimmick here to make my point. I was going to come in with a Turner's heart hat to let you know that the sky is not falling. And we don't have to run around like Chicken Little on this. John Blankley is correct. He's talking about the carrying cost each citizen has of keeping his major asset in place, which is his home. And what he's saying is your cost between your asset value and the cost in taxes to maintain it, as one of the inputs, has been reduced over years. It may not seem that way to you, but it has been in actual proportion. Number two, we are the lowest-tax town around in any range you want practically the world, but certainly in the tri-state area, so much so that if we were to double our taxes, we would still be the cheapest town around. And I know that's not something you like, but it's true. But sometimes, we're so busy in our little own bubble that we don't see — we're not comparing to what's going on outside the world. There are other issues that Mr. Blankley had brought up that I think is important. One of the ways of judging the health of the town is its relationship between its expenses and assets. In this case, it would be our budget versus our grand list. It's important to note that in 1970, we had a grand list of $1,400 million and a budget of approximately $33 million, which meant the ratio of 2.4% was the ratio that we had in that. Today, to 10, it is 34 — basically, $34.5 billion in the grand list and $378 million in the budget, which is 1.1%. It's been basically a reduction by half. Now, to put this in perspective, a healthy town, I believe, can be rated at about 5% and still have good ratings, AAA ratings and bonding and everything else. That means that Greenwich could probably sustain a budget of, say, around $1 billion and still be considered healthy, not suggesting that. But to say the sky's falling for us, I think is being a bit hysterical. The thing that I would like to point out to you is that if you are out of work and unemployed, this is the best town to be in with the lowest tax around to keep you going. I would hate to be unemployed in Stanford or in Westchester, where I'd have to sell my house just for the taxes.
Thirty seconds.
What I am really saying is that, over the period of the time that this report was taken, there have been several economic slumps in the national economy and the local economy. All of us have long memories, remember them, '70s, '80s. About every 10 years, we've had a hit. We've survived that very well, not just survived it, we've grown and prospered. And we've also taken another big change in this town, which people don't think of. In 1970, we were still basically a bedroom community, and we are now a full municipality. I think we need to change from a savings attitude to an investment attitude so that we really are good fiscal shepherds. Thank you.
Irv Porter, District 6, to be followed by Ed Diddakis, District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope there are no Chicken Littles in this room. We've got a lot to be proud of. And particularly, I think we have to be proud of those that took the initiative to do the grunt work that had to be done in order to call our attention to something that some of us have been aware of for a long while. So thank you, Lucia, and thank you, District 7. We've got a wake-up call, and we're back to 101 when it comes to what you do when you get a wake-up call. You follow the money. And that's what we're doing tonight. We're following the money. Just a couple of thoughts about following the money. Take 300 — I'm sorry, take $30 billion as the grand list and grow it at 1% per year, which is what it's been growing at. That's $300 million. And then, take a nominal mil rate of 10. And what you wind up with is, in today's environment, $30 million a year of additional revenue, which no longer exists at that same level. We have to do something. The BET understands that. The First Selectmen understands that. We all understand that. There are two words that have been missing from our vocabulary tonight, though, and I don't think they're missing from the vocabulary of the BET or the First Selectmen, and that is, what are the needs and how do you prioritize? What are the needs and how do you prioritize? And until we put some context in the work that has been done, so we understand how and why and what our relative competitiveness is versus the milieu around us of other communities that are similar or dissimilar, and we look at all the other aspects that bring us here to start with, because we're part of the volunteer force, just like the BET is part of the volunteer force. They're not getting paid for their grunt work. So put that in the context when you think of this. There is no reason why you should not vote, no reason you should not vote for this sense of the meeting resolution. On the other hand, there is a reason, and I think everyone here understands that, we have to put this in the context of hows and whys, and that's the responsibility of our leaders. Thank you.
Ed Diddakis, District 1, to be followed by Stephen Walco, Chair of the BET.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. You know, I think the information District 7 provided was outstanding. It certainly focused me. But I've got to tell you, I'm a little frustrated because we've spent more time here tonight debating a sense of the meeting resolution, which we all say has no power, much more time than we probably have spent debating spending cuts in the last three or four budget meetings. And I have an enormous amount of respect for Mr. Walco, who chairs our BET, and Mr. Tessie, who did so before him. And quite frankly, I find them very accessible, and I find the process that they offer to us very open, starting very early in the process with many meetings for us to attend exclusively as RTM members, and also the opportunity to join them at their regularly-scheduled BET meetings. My guess is, a lot of us don't show up for those meetings. The power is not to the BET. We have the power. We have the power every May to cut spending, because no one seems to be talking about spending more other than Mr. Von Kaiseling, but we have the ability to cut spending every May, yet we really don't. You know, maybe a car here or there. Dr. Carlson comes up with his proposal to cut $100,000 or $200,000 out of the Board of Ed budget, and we vote that down. But we have the power. And the other thing I've heard tonight is the frustration with the binding arbitration process. And yeah, that's pretty frustrating, and I've sat with you, and I voted for those contracts that Ms. Caldwell has said to me, "Oh, well, we could go off to binding arbitration and get a worse deal." But the more I think about this, the more I realize that we have the power there, too, because while perhaps we have to accept a 3% or 4% GWI when we prefer a 1% GWI, we do not have to fund that contract. If we want to fight back on these things, we have to have the courage to say, "No, we'll accept your 4% GWI from the arbitration process, but we're only funding it as if it was 1%." And let me tell you, it's going to be pretty ugly the first time we do it. But we won't have to do it more than once or twice before the message will go out loud and clear, and we will have a successful negotiating process. People are scared. They're scared their taxes are going crazy.
Thirty seconds.
As well as we have done here in the BET, we are facing a massive income tax increase on January 1st, and it's going to hit the residents of Greenwich harder than any place else in the country. And the legislature in Hartford has proposed, back in the spring, a statewide property tax for everybody. You know the mil rate they want to set it at? That's 10. That's a higher mil rate than what you're paying right now. So that means if that gets through, your taxes are going to double. This is why people are scared. Government's out of control. Well, we've done a pretty good job here. We still have to be diligent. I'm going to vote for this. It doesn't mean anything, but I hope that we've all focused, and we've got to be much more attentive come May in the budget meeting. Thank you.
Stephen Walco, Chair of the BET, to be followed by Christina Edwards, District 8. Christina.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. Thank you first to District 7 and the BOC for initially proposing this sense of the meeting. There has been a great deal of conversation surrounding this resolution. Let it not be said that the government of Greenwich does not thoroughly debate those issues that affect our town and, most importantly, our quality of life. This has been a healthy debate, one which has made every person think about what is important not only to this generation, but to generations to come. The good news is that every single person in this room is responsible for the fiscal year 12 budget. We, the BET, the RTM, the Board of Ed, and the First Selectmen are the ones who have the sole responsibility to propose, discuss, and ultimately vote on the budget. No one group can or should monopolize the process, and this process has served us well. I'm not here tonight to comment on the fine details of the underlying report. By and large, the report is accurate. It's a snapshot of our town over the last 40 years. Some have argued that the report fails to utilize the appropriate timeframe. For instance, over the period 1999 to present, the town's table of organization has decreased by 49 positions, and thus, the recent work of the First Selectmen and his decision to lay off employees was necessary last year has not been properly captured. Others have commented that in 1970, the budget was roughly 3.8% of the grand list, whereas today, it is much lower. While all these facts and figures are interesting and can be dissected in any manner or way, the bottom line is that for the past 40 years, government has grown. It's grown higher than the rate of inflation, both in absolute dollars and in staffing. So what do you want to do about it? Lower taxes and minimal debt are now not new concepts to Greenwich budgets. They have been the guiding principles of the BET for, at the very least, the last decade and, I dare say, many years earlier. Over 10 years ago, the BET instituted the current budget process. Today, we now enjoy budget guidelines, a CIP process, and a consolidated budget. This process has not only simplified a more efficient budget process, but more importantly, produced better budgets. Budgets that attempt to relate budget goals to actual dollars requested, capital projects that support operating budgets, and a manner in which to evaluate capital projects to separate the must-haves from the nice-to-haves. We have been able to produce 3.5% mil rate increases for nine consecutive years, and I would submit to you that last year, we did a little bit better. We gave you a mil rate increase of 3.37, but our work is yet to be completed. Based on conversations as early as this past summer, the draft BET guidelines utilized a mil rate increase of 2.9%, an almost one-half of 1% decrease from last year. Time will tell what mil rate increase will actually be used in the budget guidelines, which vote will be this November, and the proposed overall level of spending in fiscal year 12, which will not be presented to you until May. But make no mistake about it, the BET recognizes the different economic and difficult economic environment in which we live. Mere generalities about mil rate increases or debt service are not enough and do not address the concerns of our fellow taxpayers without also committing to an ongoing conversation about how we're going to achieve these goals. The saying, "Actions speak louder than words," is appropriate in discussing the sense of the meeting resolution. How do we achieve lower mil rate increases when pension and healthcare costs have significantly risen over the past few years? How do we lower debt service when we continue to have major infrastructure needs? The answers lie in this room. We collectively will be answering all of those questions over the next seven months. If you've ever attended a BET public meeting or watched Channel 79, I'm sure you will agree that the vast majority of speakers offer comments on behalf of a project, which require expenditures. Very few individuals have spoken for the need for greater fiscal restraint. This sense of the meeting resolution seeks a spot at the podium early on in the process to ensure that that voice for lower increases and less debt is heard. Mission accomplished. We have heard you, and in fact, the BET had this issue presented to it at its meeting last week. But with this resolution comes greater responsibility, a responsibility to follow through on your vote tonight. Real projects, real positions within the town's table of organization will need to be prioritized, and some will not make the cut. With increased costs in the areas I mentioned already and declining revenue from conveyance taxes, interest, and building permits, to submit to you a budget consistent with this sense of the meeting resolution, tough and unpopular decisions will have to be made. Not every request will be funded. As representatives taxpayers, we collectively have the opportunity to make those decisions. To maintain the integrity of the process, our decisions must not be contradictory to this earlier vote. In closing, the sense of the meeting is a wonderful expression on the need to seek efficiencies whenever possible and balance the budget against the true needs of the public. But it is only the beginning. It is a start to a seven-month conversation about what is important and what is not in the context of projects, services, and levels of spending. After tonight, the hard work really begins. I look forward to continuing this conversation with all of you. Thank you for your time.
Christine Edwards, District 8, to be followed by Steve Anderson, Chair of the Board of Ed.
Thank you, RTM colleagues, Mr. Moderator, and I'd also like to thank everyone who's at home watching this particular meeting and who will see this as the future, because many people don't come out to the meetings, but we have a very, very strong viewership. And I really commend the fact that we have this on TV available to people who can't make it out in the evening. One of the comments I just wanted to really elucidate on was the fact that we shouldn't be just doing our business here, and I don't think we do. The RTM has all of our various districts and then our committees, and it's really in the committees that we do so much of our work. And this is also true with the budget. We don't just look and cut the budget as we go to May. We are in process of having a conversation, as we have, with the BET, with the Selectmen, with all the various different boards, the Board of Education and such, where the district members and the committees attend those meetings before the budget gets solidified. And that's really where we need to do our work through the year. We don't wait till May. And I think that the development of this sense of the meeting resolution really brings that forward. We are attending meetings. How many people went to, other than their district meeting, this week? Almost everybody, right? Because that's where our work goes. We have people throughout all of the districts who are attending the finance committees, the education committees, the budget overview committees, et cetera. We have so many committees where the work of the town is looked at, reviewed, analyzed, and from that, we attend the BET meetings and the budget meetings of the BETs, the education — Board of Education meetings. All of these things are important for us so that when we get that book, we start looking at it, and we can go line by line. Maybe we need to have another meeting outside of all the meetings to understand what the budget book is all about for people who may be confused by that. But that's where our work is done throughout the year, not just in a grandstand and making a cut on May. We need to be doing that work together with our Selectmen, together with our BET, our Board of Ed, every single part of the town, so that we, as the district members and the representatives for the town of Greenwich, are educated and can therefore bring to our constituents what needs to be done, and they can therefore understand it much better. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this point tonight.
Steve Anderson, Chair of the Board of Education, to be followed by Roger Laurie, District 7.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. RTM members.
To be followed by Valerie Stouffer, District 7.
I'm going with the —
And then we'll be ready.
I'm going with the abridged version. The education budget in Greenwich is a big component of the overall town budget. We don't hide or run from that fact. Greenwich has historically placed a very high value on our public school system and has justifiably high expectations for us. The Board of Ed's job is to balance the needs, expectations, and desires of our town within the financial limitations of our town. the financial limitations of our town. There's no doubt, as mentioned, that the town is a strong supporter of education and understands an educational system's impact on property values. The town also rightfully expects proper fiscal stewardship of the tax dollars that support our educational system. The Board of Ed works very hard to make sure that our budget transparency is as high as can be. Everything, and I mean everything budget-oriented, is on our website. Go download it. It will take a while. We diligently work to absorb unbudgeted students within our base budget. We haven't come back for an operating interim appropriation in at least the last five years. We are spending capital dollars to make sure that we are providing the needed educational environment for our students and protecting our town's assets so that we don't get into deferred maintenance issues that may be penny-wise and pound-foolish and result in Ham Ave or Glenville-like situations all over again. Whether you vote for or against the SOMR, I urge all RTM members not to wait until the May budget period to weigh in on our budget. We actually start our detailed 11-12 budget work one week from tomorrow. Tuesday, November 9th, 7:00 PM, Kos Cob School. If your calendar is light in November and December, the Board of Ed can fill it for you. November 9th, budget. November 18th, regular meeting where we'll discuss the budget. November 30th, budget. December 2nd, regular meeting discussing the budget. December 9th, budget, and finally, a vote on December 16th. Come listen, come opine, weigh in early, weigh in often, weigh in with specifics. As always, make us justify the dollars that we ask you for. Over the space of these six public meetings, three solely dedicated to the budget, spanning six weeks, and culminating in our December 16th vote, we will work hard to put together a budget to present to you that balances educational needs and expectations with financial reality and keeps the town of Greenwich at the forefront of desirability as a place to move to, to live in, and to educate our children in. Over the next seven months, we look forward to constructively working with all the members of the RTM to arrive at that right mix of supplying the educational system with the right resources while staying within the town's fiscal ability. Thank you.
Roger Laurie, District 7, to be followed by Valerie Stouffer, District 7.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, town officials, we've had some very interesting comments tonight, positive as well as negative. It's no surprise to everybody here, I believe, that Greenwich faces its third year of financial stress. Lower projected revenues, building permit revenue, conveyance taxes, interest income all down, health premiums, profit contributions will cost us more. The state of Connecticut has its own problems. The budget for 2011 and '12 shows a deficit at the current time of $3.4 billion with a B. That will inevitably result in less state aid to Greenwich and probably a statewide income tax increase for all of us. Greenwich expenditures have doubled since 1970. You all are aware of that. Our headcount has grown by 40%. Greenwich has 14.6 employees per 1,000 residents. The seven or eight towns around us in Fairfield County, Darien, New Canaan, Westport, et cetera, all have between eight or nine employees per 1,000 residents. Stanford has 11. That's the closest they get to us. Yes, we have benefited from these tremendous increases. We have all benefited. There's no question about that. Our services have risen significantly for the last 30 years. But if we continue with a kind of mil rate increases, whether it's 3.5% or 2.9% or less, I hope, the taxes will rise, the taxes of our taxes, our constituents' taxes will The point of tonight's resolution is that we have to take the first step. We have to begin to stem the rise in budgets, costs, taxes, et cetera. Why not now? Why not here? By voting for the sense of the meeting resolution put forward by the BOC this evening, we are beginning to send the message to all concerned, to the Board of Estimate, to the First Selectmen, to our constituents, that this is the first step, a strong first step, in getting control again of our budget. Now is the time to do it, here and now. Please vote for this sense of the meeting resolution.
Thank you. Valerie Stouffer.
I have just a short statement, final statement, from our District 7. Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, and Greenwich citizens and taxpayers, by now you know that the purpose of the SOMR is to set a philosophy. It does not target any specific departments or programs. I have lived in Greenwich for over 40 years, and two of my children live here with their families. Greenwich is a very special community with a diverse population that benefits from an impressive array of services. But in this new era of fiscal downturn, we must advocate the best possible use of taxpayer money to fund our services and infrastructure. I'm also a 27-year member of the RTM. People ask, "How do I continue to spend long nights at meetings? Isn't the RTM a meaningless organization?" I must admit, I've been discouraged when we finally examine the budget book before a May meeting and in a gesture of frugality, remove a truck from a town department. Gestures are not enough, but the RTM is not meaningless. I believe in the representative town meeting and in the role our members play in setting goals and providing leadership in our town. Tonight, please join me in setting these critical financial goals, providing leadership by voting for the sense of the meeting resolution. Thank you.
Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. It's been a real educational experience to sit and listen, not only this evening, to the comments made by well-meaning individuals, residents, representatives of the public on what they foresee is best for the town of Greenwich. This is not unlike the conversations I've been having with representatives of neighborhood associations over the last several weeks. And I think everyone who lives in Greenwich takes great pride in values our community. They value what it has to offer. They like to work to improve it, but at the same time, they're concerned. And they're concerned with the environment in which we live, which is a highly volatile economic period, one that's created great anxiety. And I think everyone is trying to balance the two. And the resolution that is offered tonight, I think, is a constructive start for a broader conversation with the community, to make them aware that we all share the concern. And at the same time, we want to see to it that we preserve what's best about Greenwich. There is a value in being a Greenwich resident, in all of the amenities that it offers. But at the same time, we are challenged. We are challenged because we live in a broader world, one that requires us to abide by edicts outside of our town, and those were referenced tonight. And I remind you that you have an opportunity to express yourself on that through the election process, and I'm sure you all will do so. But those issues at the state do affect us, and we continue to be vigilant and express our concern and offer alternatives. But clearly, it was stated by the representative from District 12 very eloquently, Mr. Manetti, about the collective bargaining process, and one that I share great, great concern and frustration. But I would encourage you to support the resolution tonight as a point of departure in a very important conversation that we are having, and one that I think has great value and purpose as we move forward to do what's best for the citizens of the town of Greenwich. Thank you.
Drew Marzullo, to be followed by Bob Tuthill. So, there's hope. Yes, you did. Bob Tuthill has a motion he would like to offer.
Well, mine's quite short. I never thought I would be agreeing with Ed Diddakis, first of all. And I say that because sense of the resolutions are great in theory, but until this body starts to have an honest conversation about what we want to cut, I urge you not to support this resolution. Until we start having a conversation about what in the budget we want to cut, and let's talk about that.
All right, Mr. Tuthill has a motion.
I move the previous question.
All right. Is there any objection? Is there any objection? All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 6, as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Since that is the final item to come before us, we will await the result of that vote We have the result of the vote on the budget sense of the meeting resolution, item number 6. Those in favor, 135. Opposed, 41 abstaining 12 that item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting and absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.